Buenas noches a todos. Gracias por estar en casa esta noche y no fuera afuera cuando está 45. Es genial estar de vuelta aquí. Todos están cómodos, teniendo en cuenta que hay que mantener la máscara. Hay un poco de distancia si están en grupos diferentes, pero si están cómodos donde están, permanezcan donde están, eso está bien. Un par de... un poco de housekeeping. Y voy a saltar directamente al final de la reunión. Si están aquí al final de la reunión, la forma en que vamos a salir es de la fila trasera hacia la frente. Así que vamos a salir en filas desde atrás, solo para que nadie se criscroce, solo para mantenerlo seguro si están todavía aquí al final. Así que ya que son 7:30, llamaré a la reunión a orden. Un coro presentado, que son 30 personas o más, que tenemos. Un par de temas. Tenemos cuatro porteros en caso de que los necesitemos. Espero que no lo hagamos, pero tenemos a Ann Buckley, tenemos a Mary Heaney, Kathy McKinnon y Liz Nichols. Y si tenemos que hacer un cálculo de puestos de pie, entonces los llevaremos, pero con suerte no lo harán. Si eres un votante no registrado, creo que estás aquí. Así que si no tienes tu tarjeta azul, necesitarías estar en esa área justo ahí. Para votar, vas a necesitar tu tarjeta. Si te voy a pedir que levantes tu tarjeta, no te vamos a pedir que sepa, pero solo levanta tu tarjeta para que me sea fácil. Si pudieramos parar por el juramento de lealtad. jurar lealtad a la bandera de Estados Unidos de América y a la república por la cual se encuentra una nación bajo Dios indivisible con libertad y justicia para todos. Si pudieran permanecer parados, perdimos a una persona aquí, Peter Lane este año. Si pudieran tener un momento de silencio para Peter. Gracias. Otra cosa. En algún punto, no lo veo aquí todavía. Estábamos esperando a Bruce Tar, senador Tar. Va a decir algunos... Oh, está aquí. Ese no es él, es su hermano de dos, ese es su hermano de dos, ese no es él. Voy a tomar una motion para renunciar a la lectura del acuerdo. ¿Hay un segundo? ¿Todos a favor? Una referencia rápida al FinCom. ¿Aprobarías todos los artículos monetarios o quieres hacerlos uno a la vez? Así que todos ustedes están aprobados por el financiero. Perfecto, eso nos va a ahorrar un poco de tiempo. Gracias. Así que tengo a Bruce aquí, Ann y Ann Margaret. Ustedes pueden sentarse ahora, disculpen. Sé que es Bruce, pero pueden sentarse. Así que, ¿todos conocen a Bruce Tar y Ann Margaret? Van a tener una presentación para nosotros.
Bueno, gracias, señor moderador, y gracias a todos ustedes aquí esta noche. Quiero comenzar reconociendo a mi colega, representante estatal Ann Margaret Ferrante, quien también está aquí conmigo esta noche para poder presentar algunos premios muy especiales a las personas que estaban en la audiencia esta noche. Pero antes de que lleguemos a eso, queremos decirles gracias a todos por venir para poder ejercer sus derechos como miembros de la reunión municipal y como ciudadanos de Essex para poder tomar decisiones importantes para guiar el futuro de la ciudad. Y eso es algo que ni uno de nosotros cree que nunca debe tomarse por hecho y es muy significativo que todos vinieron esta noche. Queremos decirles gracias por eso. Y hablando del futuro de la ciudad, una de las cosas que el gobierno municipal ha decidido hacer a través de Brendan y a través del Consejo de Seleccionamiento es algo que es muy importante, y eso es poder reconocer a aquellos que están dando servicio y han dado tremendo servicio a favor de la comunidad. Les merecen un momento de gracias y un momento de reconocimiento por cómo han hecho que esta ciudad sea mejor y un lugar más fuerte. Y así esperamos que en los próximos minutos se quedarán con nosotros mientras presentamos una reconocimiento bien merecido a algunas personas muy especiales que proporcionan servicio a esta comunidad. Ahora, una de las grandes tradiciones que tenemos aquí es poder reconocer al empleado del año. Y creo que todos reconocemos que día a día en esta ciudad estamos servidos por personas que vienen a la calle de la ciudad o en este caso al Consejo sobre la Aging para poder proporcionar lo mejor que tienen para asegurarnos de que nuestros señores sean apoyados y que tengan acceso a buena información, que sean capaces de socializar y que se sientan conectados a la comunidad de una manera que no tendrían si no tuviéramos un Consejo activo sobre la Aging. Y creo que es importante darse cuenta, si alguna vez has estado al Consejo sobre la Aging y al Centro de Sénior, sabes que es un lugar dinámico, activo donde siempre hay algo pasando y todos quieren serlo. No, no voy a hablar para la representante Ferrante, pero diré desde mi perspectiva que el mejor momento es cuando hay un social de helados en el Consejo sobre la Aging. Lo dejaré así, Don Burnham, tú sabes de qué estoy hablando. Y diría para aquellos de ustedes que están tomando notas, y veo un par de manijas ahí que me restringo a uno, sirviendo en el social de helados. Pero esos tipos de cosas, esos tipos de cosas suceden porque tenemos liderazgo dinámico en el Consejo sobre la Aging y dos muy, muy activos y energéticos gente. Número uno, Kristen Crockett, nuestro director del Consejo sobre la Aging. Y número dos, Tess Leary, quien es nuestro director de difusión en el Consejo sobre la Aging, coordinador de difusión. Y ellos, estoy muy contento de decirles, han sido seleccionados como co-empleados del año. Y les pediría que nos unan y les aplaudan una vez más. Así que Kristen, venga. Y tengo que decirles, ha sido increíble ver todas las cosas que han estado sucediendo bajo tu liderazgo en el Centro de Sénior y con el Consejo sobre la Aging. Los cambios en el edificio, sé que estaba allí recientemente y vi las modificaciones que han sucedido para poder servir mejor a la gente en la era de COVID-19. Hay un nuevo kiosque allí donde la gente se inscribe, lo cual es útil no solo para la responsabilidad sino también para ayudar a construir números para que podamos abogar por más financiación. Y es simplemente un lugar muy agradecido. Y como mencioné antes, siempre hay algo pasando. Y así, este será el verdadero prueba de cuánto dinero Brendan quiere gastar. Sabemos que en la mayoría de las cosas él es muy frugal. Oh. Pero Kristen. Estoy muy contento de presentarles... Oh, Brendan gastó algo de dinero. Este es el premio de 2021 de empleado del año de la ciudad de Essex presentado a Kristen Crockett. Ahora, aquí está la situación, Kristen, hay un montón de cámaras ahí. Así que vamos a asegurarnos de que obtengamos todas ellas, ¿verdad? Así que te voy a dar esto, lo vamos a voltear, tienes que inclinarlo atrás un poco porque reflejará, ¿vale? Y luego vamos a empezar aquí y luego vamos a ir alrededor. Mira, Ruth tiene la cámara, ¿listo? Así que, ¿estás listo para esto? Aquí vamos. Representante, ¿quieres venir aquí y unirnos a esto? Vamos hacia mí, ¿vale? ¿Listo? Aquí vamos. Pivot hacia el centro. ¿Estamos bien? Ahora a la izquierda. Ahora, antes de que te vayas, tenemos algo más para ti. Esto es de mí y de la representante Ferrante, esta es la versión del Senado. Por lo tanto, es un poco más caro. La versión de la Cámara vendrá y aquí vamos de nuevo. De todos nosotros y nuestros colegas en la legislatura, gracias por el trabajo bien hecho.
Gracias. Solo quiero agradecerles por la nominación para esto y por ganar este premio. Esto significa mucho. He puesto mucho corazón y alma en trabajar en el Consejo sobre la Aging. Y veo algunas caras que sé, veo otras personas que no sé. Así que te invito a que vayas y veas todas las cosas diferentes que ofrecemos, no solo helados. Pero realmente cualquier cosa que alguien necesite, ya sea para sí mismo más de 60 o alguien menos de 60 que se preocupe por alguien más, estamos aquí para ayudarte. Gracias.
Voy a poner eso de nuevo.
Gracias.
Te agradezco.
Y usted dijo que había a Tess. No.
Oh, Tess no está aquí.
Tess no está aquí.
Ok. Aceptando el premio para un co- empleado del año, Tess Leary será Kristen Crockett. Y es importante para nosotros reconocer a Tess también por ser la coordinadora de difusión. De nuevo, una de las cosas importantes con nuestra comunidad sénior es asegurarnos de que la gente no se siente aislada y se sienta incluida y sepan que la comunidad les preocupa. Y la coordinadora de difusión ciertamente aborda todas esas cosas y hace que la gente entre al centro. Y para aquellos que no pueden entrar al centro, asegúrense de que se toquen en sus vidas con el programa apropiado. Así que démosle un aplauso apropiado a Tess Leary también. Ahora volvemos a nuestro programa para alguien que no está compensado por su trabajo para la comunidad pero alguien que cada día se vaya el extra milla para asegurarnos de que estemos bien cuidados y en este caso con respecto a nuestra salud pública. Y la recepción o el receptor del premio de Voluntario del año es para un miembro del Consejo de Salud. Y alguien que en un momento, voy a decir su nombre y todos lo sabrán porque es alguien que siempre está ahí cuando la necesitamos ya sea con una respuesta EMS o más o menos haciendo una respuesta a COVID-19. Ella ha estado ayudando a proporcionar vacunas, no solo en Essex, sino en comunidades en toda la región. Ella ha estado ayudando con el rastreo de contacto. Ella ha sido no solo vigilante, sino atento a todas las cosas que son necesarias para una respuesta efectiva a la respuesta a COVID-19, lo que significa atención al detalle, tener y proporcionar buena información y asegurarse de que la gente sea tratada de una manera eficaz y correcta. Y no solo hace todo eso, sino que lo hace con caridad, compasión y también con un gran sonrisa. Cualquier vez que la veas sabes que está realmente feliz de verte y realmente feliz de estar haciendo lo que está haciendo. Y es simplemente una individual notable que no busca llamar la atención a sí misma. Y usted sabe, incluso llevaba máscaras esta noche para que no la veieran. Pero eso fue una broma. Pero en cualquier momento, creo que todos querrán unirse a la representante Ferrante y a mí, el Consejo de Seleccionamiento y el administrador de la ciudad en reconocer a nuestro Voluntario del año, Sally Ann Rich. Venga. ¿Nos sorprendió? ¿Sabes cuán difícil es mantener un secreto en la ciudad de Essex de Sally Rich? Congratúcelos, hicieron un trabajo maravilloso. Bien. Así que Sally, sé que cuando vayas a casa esta noche, Walter va a estar en construcción de una sala de trofeos y queremos tener algo adecuado. Probablemente ya haya comenzado la construcción. Y creo que es maravilloso también. Solo quiero llamar la atención al hecho de que tu hija viajó aquí esta noche, Jessie, y estamos tan afortunados de tenerla. Creo que ella también te trajo unas flores también, así que maravilloso. Sí, dale un aplauso, por favor. Así que Sally, tenemos para ti el premio de Voluntario de la ciudad de Essex de 2021 presentado a Sally Ann Rich. Y así te voy a dejar sostener las flores, yo voy a sostener esto y Ann Margaret se va a llevar allí y harán lo mismo. Aquí vamos. ¿Listo?
¿Estamos sonriendo?
Sí, estamos sonriendo. Ahora vamos a voltear, asegúrate de que todo el mundo se vea bien aquí.
Creo que has hecho esto varias veces, Bruce.
Sally, felicitaciones.
Muchas gracias.
Y realmente gracias por estar allí durante los días más oscuros de la pandemia para apoyar a todos nosotros y satisfacer nuestras necesidades de salud y realmente ir el extra milla. Y sabemos que no lo haces por dinero y no lo haces por fama. Lo haces porque te preocupas por todos nosotros y ese es el honor más significativo que todos podemos tener. Así que, felicitaciones. La representante Ferrante tiene la cita, que corresponde a esto. Así que Walter necesitará una segunda mesa en la sala de trofeos. Así que también tenemos una cita. Así que Sally, ¿no te gustaría...? Te diré lo que, la representante Ferrante sostiene esto, yo sostendré esto. ¿No te gustaría saludar al micrófono?
Bueno, soy无声, lo cual es unusual para mí. Y apenas aprecio la reconocimiento. Y ha sido recompensante un año y medio o dos trabajando con las ciudades circundantes de Essex con COVID e intentando asegurar que todo el mundo esté seguro y en camino. Y gracias, gracias.
Felicitaciones. Walter, aquí está la caja. De nuevo, somos tan afortunados de tener gente a nivel local que han sido tan efectivas en ayudar a abordar COVID-19. Así que, después queremos reconocer a tres individuos que han proporcionado literalmente décadas de servicio a la ciudad de Essex. Y es importante que, de nuevo, prestemos un poco de tiempo, prestamos un poco de atención a aquellos que han estado trabajando cada día en nuestro nombre, a veces silenciosamente, siempre efectivamente, durante varios años. Y la primera persona que tenemos es nuestro fiscal de la DPDW, Mandy Davis, quien ha dado 20 años de servicio hasta ahora a la ciudad de Essex. Mandy, venga. Mandy obtiene una caja más grande. En la DPDW hacen cosas grandes. Oh, Dios mío. Así que esto es presentado a Mandy Davis, fiscal administrativa, en reconocimiento de tus 20 años de servicio desde 2001 hasta 2021. Y Mandy, parece un poco como un garaje de la DPDW, así que hay un poco de simbolismo en esto. Felicitaciones y gracias. También tenemos una cita legislativa para Mandy también por todos estos años de mantener un seguimiento de todo, asegurarse de que los presupuestos sean pagados, asegurarse de que los plazos sean procesados y asegurarse de que todo funciona según el plan en la DPDW. Así que, felicitaciones y por favor comparte con nosotros algunas palabras. ¿No? Ya sabes, soy un poco así. Soy muy tímido al hablar en un micrófono, así que puedo relacionarme con eso.
Yo ciertamente no.
Vamos a hacer una foto. Voy a doblar esta caja. Bien, así que, ¿no te gusta esto así? Representante. Sí, tú en el medio. Bien, aquí vamos. Sonríe a Ruth. Sí, lo hacemos. Bien, pivot al centro. ¿Ves todas las cámaras ahí? Pivot a la izquierda. Mandy Davis, damas y caballeros, le damos otra vez un aplauso. Mandy. Te agradezco. Bien. Nuestros siguientes dos recibidores son miembros de una organización muy importante en esta comunidad, el departamento de fuego. Y todos sabemos día a día que tomamos confort en saber que tenemos profesionales en nuestra comunidad que están listos para responder a emergencias que suceden en nuestras vidas. Y a veces los vemos en algunos de los peores momentos de nuestras vidas. Pero sabemos que llegan preparados, están entrenados, son profesionales y hacen increíbles cantidades de sacrificio para poder estar allí en los momentos en los que los necesitamos. Y esas son increíbles personas que sirven en nuestro departamento de fuego. Y hacer eso durante 20 años es bastante notable. Y así, nuestro primer receptor durante 20 años en el departamento es Ian Woodman. Ian. Es un premio muy agradable y dice, presentado a Ian Woodman en reconocimiento de 20 años de servicio al departamento de fuego de la ciudad de Essex. Muy apropiadamente, la base está roja. Muy significativo. Te agradezco. Y de nuevo, tenemos una cita legislativa y todos están acostumbrados al drill que va a seguir. ¿Ves esa cámara azul atrás?
Esa es mi madre.
Esa es tu madre. Madre Woodman, hola. Hiciste un buen trabajo. Bien, vamos. Sí, dale un aplauso. Bien, aquí vamos. Bien. ¿Vuelves al centro? No, no, desapareció. Bien, vamos a ir a la izquierda, solo en caso. Aquí tenemos uno ahí. Bien, Ian, ¿te gustaría decir algo?
No, realmente no. No, realmente esto se dedica a todos los miembros que van más allá. Gracias.
Diría cuán orgulloso debería ser todo el mundo en esta ciudad por ese increíble nuevo edificio de seguridad pública que aloja al policía y el departamento de fuego. Es notable. Y solo voy a dar un quick plug. Me han dicho que si quieres venir y ver, en particular el lado de la casa y aún no has hecho eso, aún no, habrá un espagueti notable siendo servido allí este sábado próximo, creo que a 4:00 p. m. 4:00 p. m. para espaguetis y bollos de carne en la estación de fuego. Así que podemos garantizarles que no habrá un fuego en ese evento en particular. Bien, así que nuestro siguiente individuo ha estado con el departamento durante 35 años, lo cual es notable porque solo parece tener unos 35 años. Pero ciertamente ha sido un miembro dedicado y leal a este equipo en el departamento de fuego de Essex y ha servido en una variedad de roles y recientemente ascendió, como todos saben, al oficio de jefe. Y en ese rol, obviamente ha tomado over de un departamento muy bien gestionado construido en la base que llevó Dan, Dan Ducette. Y ahora tenemos un nuevo jefe de fuego notable que es energético, es pasionado y podemos ver claramente por qué ha estado en el trabajo durante 35 años porque tiene la pasión de ser miembro del servicio de fuego que lo motiva a cada día a la excelencia. Y no solo busca esa excelencia a su propio nombre, sino también para el departamento entero, lo que significa construir equipo y construir programas de entrenamiento efectivos y asegurarse de que todos tienen el equipo que necesitan. Y es ciertamente un crédito al departamento de fuego de ser liderado por Raimi Reader. Así que Raimi, por favor, venga para que podamos darle el premio.
Felicitaciones.
Así que esto dice, presentado a Raimi Reader en reconocimiento de 35 años de servicio al departamento de fuego de la ciudad de Essex, 2021. Y de nuevo, 35 años es absolutamente notable. Felicitaciones, jefe.
Gracias. Solo quiero decir que estoy honrado de ser el jefe de fuego de Essex. Gracias.
Una copia de las declaraciones de Raimi se imprimirá en el próximo informe de la ciudad. Al medio, tenemos una copa ahí. Bien, ¿estamos bien? Bien.
Gracias.
Raimi Reader, damas y caballeros. Así que con eso, la representante Ferrante y yo volveremos la reunión a tu muy capaz de la ciudad moderador. Pero sin antes decir que nos encargamos de muchas cosas representándote en la Cámara y el Senado. Y es un verdadero honor representar esta comunidad, tanto para la representante Ferrante como a mí. Y muchas veces se enfrentan a muchas cosas difíciles, muchas cosas difíciles. Pero una de las cosas que nos energizan y motivan es poder venir una noche como esta y compartir con tus funcionarios electos y compartir con ustedes la reconocimiento de algunos really destacados servidores públicos que nos recuerdan que no importa lo que puedamos leer que a veces no es charitable sobre el servicio público, es todavía una noble, digna y importante cosa para que la gente haga. Muchas gracias a todos. Tengan una buena noche.
Creo que Ruth va a venir en un segundo. Me gustaría agradecer a Bruce y Ann Margaret porque donaron mucho de su tiempo también. Venen esta noche, reconocen y dicen algunas cosas buenas, pero muchas gracias por venir. Lo apreciamos. Y Ruth, ¿quieres...?
Testing. Buenas noches a todos. Así que solo quiero decir algunas palabras. Como saben, cada año tenemos nominaciones para el empleado del año y el voluntario del año que acabamos de escuchar. Este año tuvimos una nominación para un empleado del año. Desafortunadamente, no cumplieron con los criterios, pero creo que es extremadamente importante que reconozcamos a este grupo en particular. Así que tengo unas palabras preparadas a favor de eso, lo cual es un poco inusual, así que espérenme. Me gustaría reconocer a la administración, facultad y personal del Distrito Regional de Escuela de Manchester de Essex por su outstanding trabajo durante este extra largo año de pandemia. El distrito sufrió las palmas y las flechas de los padres enfadados mientras trataba de equilibrar la seguridad de sus empleados y de la comunidad escolar en determinar cuándo regresar a nuestros edificios. De hecho, el distrito estaba cauteloso y algunos se sintieron demasiado cautelosos. Yo no. Pero han pasado por esta pandemia sin transmisiones basadas en la escuela y sin edificios cerrados debido a enfermedad. Además, su entrega de educación, el tiempo en las clases fueron entre los más altos en el estado. En resumen, mantuvieron a la comunidad escolar y las comunidades mayores seguras y entregaron una educación excelente durante las peores circunstancias. Nuestra escuela secundaria fue recientemente nombrada la 9ª mejor en el común. Esto no es solo un tributo a la escuela secundaria sino también a todos los maestros y personal en las escuelas primarias y medias que entregaron a los 9ºs listos para aprender y triunfar. Mientras el distrito no es un empleado de la ciudad, son el mayor empleo en los dos ciudades. Usan la mayor parte del presupuesto de la ciudad y sirven una gran parte de nuestros residentes. Me gustaría reconocer el excelente servicio que proporcionan, su profundo compromiso con nuestras comunidades y el espíritu de colaboración. Gracias.
Bien, acabamos de dejar todo fuera. Es notable que Bruce, he estado haciendo cosas en la ciudad mucho tiempo con Bruce y creo que esto podría haber sido la primera vez que estaba en el tiempo. Tal vez. Así que sin más, podríamos saltar directamente.
So, without any further ado, we might as well jump right into the articles. We have Article One. Peter.
I, Peter D. Fippen, move that the town vote to amend Chapter Five, Article Four, Section One, Subsection P of the town's general bylaws, issuance of resident parking stickers as shown in Article One of the Fall Town Meeting warrant.
Is there a second? Discussion?
Yeah, this is sort of a housekeeping article. Currently, there are no regulations governing who gets a parking sticker, and so that falls on the town clerk for any exceptions. And so, the Board of Select would just want to promulgate some regulations to allow and establish who's entitled to the parking stickers.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article One, raise your card. Any opposed? The motion passes. Article Two.
I, Ruth R. Parine, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $10,000 to retain the services of a consultant to assist the planning board and town planner with an analysis of the town's zoning bylaws and/or with recommendations for changes to the town's zoning bylaws, and/or with an application or applications for grant funding to augment said analysis or recommendations and anything incidental or related thereto.
Is there a second? Discussion?
So, as you know, the town voted for a two-year moratorium so that the planning board and the town planner and the residents in general could start taking a look at our zoning bylaws and revising or updating the bylaws as necessary. So, we did apply several months ago for a grant, and we did receive the grant in the amount of $45,140, which we've been using through MAPC. And we are using those funds to begin the process of revising and updating zoning bylaws before embarking on specific revisions. We want to better understand its existing land use patterns and characteristics, and would also like to gauge public opinion and how the town should proceed with the process. So, from the time period of October of this year through March of '22, we'll be using those funds with MAPC to work on that. And then, there's going to be a little bit of a lag after March '22 until we can apply for our next grant, which is $75,000. So, we are looking for the $10,000 to fund that small segment of time until we can move on to the next grant that we're hoping to get.
Any further discussion? Sure, Rob? Hi, Rob. It's Given 18 Main Street. Is there any member of the planning board present that can weigh in on this article? Lisa.
Lisa O'Donnell, 15 Island Road, Vice Chairman of the Planning Board. Planning Board is starting to work with MAPC with the funding that we've already received, just sort of gotten underway. This will definitely help us a lot. As you know, with any town board, it's a collection of volunteers, and to undertake a rigorous review of our zoning bylaw is going to require more depth than a volunteer board had. So, this is an important step, and the funding, like Ruth said, just bridges between the grant we already got for $45,000 and the next one we'll be applying for, for $75,000. So, it's really a small piece just to keep us going.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Two, raise your card. All those opposed? Motion passes. Article Three.
I, Ruth R. Parine, move that the town vote to amend Section 2-7A of the town's general bylaws, fees, building, electrical, plumbing, and gas, as shown in Article Three of the Fall Town Meeting warrant.
Is there a second? Discussion?
So, it's been brought to the board's attention that our fees are significantly lower than surrounding communities. It's been brought to us by our inspectors. And so, in doing an analysis of our surrounding towns, and quite frankly, most of the North Shore, we did find that, in fact, most of our fees are on the lower end. We tried to bring these up to a fair level without being the highest in all of our surrounding communities. So, this is just simply, again, I would say, a little bit of housekeeping to try to get on par with where the fees should be.
Any further discussion? Sure.
Mark Renzi, 86 Southern. Do we do anything to index this, so we don't have to keep amending it? We've talked about this in the Finance Committee on indexing things. So, for example, we talked about rent at Canomo, and that's indexed. Are things like this indexed, so it becomes less administrative for the town to vote on? Thank you.
Any further discussion? Brennan, you going to...
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Generally, the fees that we're talking about here have really been held for town meeting. I understand, you know, the concept of an index where the fees would automatically increase with respect to, you know, some kind of standard like the Consumer Price Index. The tradition of the town has been, however, to only approve changes to these fees when they're brought before the meeting. That's the history of it. I know that the selectmen have not proposed an index at this time.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Three, raise your card. All those opposed? The motion passes. Article Four.
I, Ruth R. Parine, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $23,400 for the purchase and installation of municipal permitting software and any fiscal year 2022 software maintenance costs associated there within, including but not limited to initial setup, annual fees, add-ons, and general training, and anything incidental or related thereto. And to transfer from free cash the sum of $6,000 to be added to the clerical part-time wages budget line in fiscal 2022, Building Inspector Department operating budget for additional clerical hours for training and operation administration of the new software.
Is there a second? Discussion?
So, the online permitting software is something that I think Essex and Rockport are the only two communities that don't currently have online permitting. One of the things we found during the pandemic was that that made everything pretty difficult, especially when the town hall closed. We saw a major need for having this, the ability to have this technology. So, we started doing some research. There are many different platforms available. OpenGov is the most popular. It's the most widely used, and it's the easiest interface to use. So, we got quotes, and it's pretty affordable. We did find somebody that knows the software. She currently works with the software in Gloucester. She's what we would consider a little bit of an expert on this. And we feel that this is a step in the right direction to bring us into the next century of being able to do this online. You can do it from your computer at home 24 hours a day. You don't need to wait until Wednesday night at 4:00 p.m. to go into the building inspector's office and wait in a line to see him. Not only that, it allows us to interface all of our departments, so everyone can see the permits online. You can look at plumbing, electrical, building, fire department, DPW. Nothing falls through the crack. Historical commission gets to sign off. So, it just allows, I guess transparency is what I like the most about it.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Four, raise your card. All those opposed? Motion passes. Article Five.
I, Guy D. Bradford, move that the town vote to transfer from the Community Preservation Fund, Open Space Reserve, the sum of $49,999 for materials to be used to renovate the municipal tennis courts at Memorial Park and anything incidental or related thereto. Said appropriation to be under the care and custody of the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Public Works.
Is there a second? Discussion?
This pretty much speaks for itself. I think it's a great opportunity for the town to bring back something that serves everyone. I would only add that any, the way this has been set up, any actual expenditure of town funds related to this article will be contingent on a successful private fundraising effort to cover the cost of labor and any additional costs for the project. And I think, Jody, if you want to speak to that?
Further discussion?
Hi, Jody Harris, 21R Spring Street. There were a group of people earlier this year who reached out and had a concern about the tennis courts that had been locked. The tennis courts were locked because they were in such poor condition that we were in jeopardy of losing our insurance in town. So, we met as a group, and I sort of picked the ball up and brought it to the Board of Selectmen and asked them if they would be interested in having a group privately do the fundraising and do the replacement of the courts. They discussed it and voted unanimously that they would be in favor of that, and they would support it for CPA funds. Guy and I went to the CPC, and they voted unanimously to recommend the $49,999. The project is about $120,000, $130,000. We have joined Marty Flood's organization for the Friends of Memorial Park to fundraise under, so that we didn't have to start our own nonprofit, which was extremely generous and helpful, particularly to me. So, Marty Flood and Jim McKenna and I met to discuss that. I met with Superintendent, DPW Superintendent Michael Gally, and then the DPW commissioners. And we are at the point now where, if we can move forward with the CPA funds, we are ready to fundraise. In fact, I have a kickoff pledge of $30,000, a single donor. I've got a second pledge of $5,000. I've got a third pledge of $1,000, and we really haven't started fundraising. So, I feel confident that this is a great community project and time to bring something back for our community. I think tennis is a lifelong sport. It is something that, as a kid, that's how I learned to play tennis, on free courts. We had tennis instruction through the park program, and I think it's time to do this. The other piece is, you know, people are interested in pickleball, and I'm going to bring it up right now, because, you know, there's chatter on it. Pickleball is a great sport, and it's gained popularity, but it's a noisy sport, and it has implications for neighbors, of which I'm hypersensitive to noise next door. So, I've started the process of looking for an alternate place for pickleball, and I'll be going back to the Board of Selectmen to discuss that. But I may have already found a place, and one of the vendors that we have pricing from has already come out and looked at the spot and given me a price for that, too. So, I have an enthusiastic couple of team members and a lot of people who want to help fundraise. We haven't started yet, so if we get this vote tonight, we are ready to kick it off. And on the schedule for construction, May of 2022, courts will be open June 2022. So, thank you to Marty Flood and his organization, because it really cut down on the legwork up front.
Any further discussion? Sure.
Richard Denton, 34A, Robbins Island Road. At the present time, or recently, there was a rather dilapidated basketball hoop at the tennis courts, and I'm wondering if the renovation includes an installation or reinstillation of basketball hoops.
At this time, the tennis courts will be simply that, two tennis courts out, two tennis courts in. A multipurpose, aren't courts like that tend to be problematic? But basketball is the other thing on the list for pickleball. Actually, I went up to the Grove to look at the basketball court up there, and it's actually in decent shape. I looked at a renovation for that, and we can also re-line that for pickleball, too. So, that's step one for basketball. Step two is, and I haven't done this yet, but we'll go back to the school district and talk about right out here, where there are basketball hoops, and if we can, you know, have a little cooperative piece, we can probably line those and make sure that there are always hoops out there available.
Any further discussion?
One more comment?
Follow-up? Sure.
Sure. I appreciate the support in other activities. I see the park as a crown jewel of the community, and there are restroom facilities there. And I think that it should be an objective of the town to try and do as many things at that park, where there's parking, restroom facilities, and other activities, as opposed to trying to find disjointed or other locations throughout the town. We're talking about community preservation funds, and the key word there to me is "community." Those are our monies. I know that you may think it's only a portion of your real estate tax, but the rest of the money comes from the state. If you've paid the state any money in recent years, and I think we all have, in fees and in taxes, it really is our money that's being spent. And it should be spent, in my estimation, at our park. If we're going to have community preservation funds, it's community. And that's our community gem, I think. It's the thing that we can focus on in our community. And I'm concerned that we don't do as much as we possibly can at that location. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Sure.
Meg Nelson, 35 Belcher Street. I was very happy to hear about the courts being renovated, because I have, in the past few months, become addicted to pickleball. So, my question, and it is, it can be noisy with the popping of the ball, and I'm curious as to how many neighbors are bothered by the sound. You know, so one neighbor is bothered by the sound, and sort of what the last gentleman was talking about is, at Memorial Park, there are restrooms, and there are parking. I'm not sure what the other location is that you're investigating. I would wonder, are there restrooms there? Are they accessible? I remember there was chatter on our Essex page on Facebook. A lot of people from the Senior Center were interested in pickleball. The proximity to the park is, to the Council on Aging, and the housing for the seniors is great. So, I would be very concerned about where it could be moved to.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Five, raise your card. All those opposed? Motion passes. Article Six.
I, James Witham, move that the town vote to transfer from the Community Preservation Fund Historic Reserve, the sum of $34,000, to assist with the restoration of the Cogswold Grant Barn complex at the historic New England Cogswold Grant property on Spring Street. And any... And anything incidental or related thereto, said appropriation to be under the care and custody of the Community Preservation Committee.
Is there a second? Discussion?
I assume that most of you people have been down to Cogswell's Grant at least at some point in your lives. It's an absolutely beautiful place. The barn is remarkable in its architecture and its shape, but we've been told and now understand that it's an imminent danger of collapse because there is one corner of the barn that's in pretty bad shape. Foundation is basically large stones that have moved over the years, and so it needs attention. It'd be a real shame to have to see them take it down. This is a good opportunity to make sure that doesn't happen.
And any further discussion?
Jody Harris, 21R Spring Street. I guess I just have a question about nonprofits in town who have large acreages and aren't paying real estate taxes applying for CPA funds. I'm confused, I guess.
Is there a question in there?
So why are we appropriating our CPA funds for a nonprofit that has an endowment of $102 million when we have a lot of projects in our town, including Centennial Grove, tennis courts, we want basketball, we want pickleball, we, you know, we support various things without an endowment, and we have a nonprofit with 100 acres who has a significant endowment looking for CPA funds out of our small half a million? I don't know what we have in the bank at the moment, but half a million dollars to support their property in our town that doesn't pay taxes. So I know it's a free-for-all, but I guess I'm concerned. I happened to be at that meeting and was listening to this conversation and wasn't aware that a non-taxpaying entity in this town could actually apply for CPA funds.
Any further discussion? Rob, if you want to speak, you can come up and kind of queue up.
I would echo what Jody asked. It's not clear, when this organization has also been investing a lot of their own money in improving their facilities, why we're being asked to support this part of it. And so, same way the FinCom asked me to talk about the planning article, I'm going to ask the FinCom to talk about this one and justify to town residents why our tax dollars would go.
Rob, you're up.
Hi, Rob, Fitzgibbon, 18 Main Street. Yeah, I second Jody's comment. I mean, I absolutely love the barn, I love the Spinaya property, but I'd love to hear a compelling argument of why should the citizens of the town of Essex fund a project that's owned by the Society for the Preservation of New England Antiquities? I mean, especially in a parcel that has just recently seen a no trespassing sign come up and just developed a component on the water.
Any further discussion?
Elizabeth Eaton, 17 Spring Street, Essex. I just want to say, especially with the pandemic, all the townspeople that have been going down, up and down Spring Streets, beautiful, nice and quiet, culminating at the end there at Cogswell Grant. So I believe the town has benefited by Cogswell Grant. It has a lot of public programs. People take their dogs down there, they go to the, I won't take time, but everybody knows in town what goes there, and I see many people in town utilizing the property there. I'm in favor of historic properties. I think Essex has to be very careful about losing more historic buildings, and I'm in favor of supporting Cogswell Grant and keeping the barn intact, as we do all, I think, have the opportunity to use and enjoy that property.
Further discussion? Mark?
Mark Renzi, 86 Southern. Absolutely agree with Jody's point, and we all do enjoy the building. It's a beautiful building, but if they've got $100 million balance sheet, I think it's a question to be asked, is how much are they contributing?
Any further discussion? Sure. Excuse me? You are not a voter. You mean, you would like to speak to this? Could I have? Excuse me? So typically what happens, if someone is not a non-registered, a non-voter, they have to, I have to get leave of the meeting for them to speak in anything on the town floor. So if you would like a representative to speak about this, then I would need you to raise your card in favor of that. Anyone opposed to her speaking? We're going to allow you to speak. I think that mic works, too, as well?
Can you hear me? Okay. Hi! So my name's Christina. I'm the Preservation Manager for Historic New England, so I oversee all of the Northshore sites, and that includes Cogswell's Grant. I know a couple questions were raised, great questions. We do get that sometimes, so I'll address some of those. Yes, we do have a pretty good, sizable endowment, but the fact is, is we have roughly, we have 37 historic house museums, and that's not even all of our buildings. We also have a couple other facilities throughout New England, so the endowment kind of goes to help all of those. I'm sure a lot of you guys have historic structures, you know that it's not cheap to keep the, the Cogswell's Grant must be divided from our sites all the way down from Rhode Island, Connecticut, Massachusetts, and Maine. So that, I think, hopefully answers the question about the endowment. We have actually put aside, we are willing to match this, so we're planning this phase of the project to cost $68,000. We're putting up 34 of our own. Last year, this is actually just a drop in the bucket to what we are doing at the site. And we've recently improved circulation at the site. That was a little less than $200,000. So we did that. We are actually did, we did drainage plans last year. We took it to the Conservation Commission, they're approved. We're going to phase that in, possibly next year, maybe the following year. We did plans for these improvements, so we paid for that out of our own pocket. There are more improvements that still need to be done, just than, just, rather than just these masonry improvements, so those will happen next year as well, and we won't come back for the CPA for that. We'll pay for that out of our own pocket. We are also planning, once we get it structurally sound, we are going, which it is, I do also just want to clarify, it is structurally sound. Once we do that, we'll then do an exterior preservation project, so the windows, the cladding, the painting, that'll all get taken care of. And we recently did a roof project that was completely funded by us, and then once we do that, we'll also trickle in that drainage project that will be site-wide. Someone mentioned the road that is going through it, and they put up a no trespassing sign. That unfortunately was a little bit of a, I don't want to call it miscommunication, but more or less. When we accepted the property from the Little family in the 1980s, it was written in the agreement that their descendants could build on a very, very small partial of the land. It's 165 acres. I don't know off the top of my head how many acres they could build on. I think it's like one or two. It's very minimal. It's off in the distance. You won't see it from the museum. Even from a lot of the advantage points from the fields, you won't be able to see it. But that was one of the stipulations of taking in this property. So we knew it at the time, and we figured that that was a very small price to play, to pay, to get this beautiful property and to get the, not just the property, but all the buildings on it and the collections that are inside of it. We are working very closely with the family to make sure that everything is done to the T, to make sure that everything is sympathetic to the landscape. They're definitely in communications with the Conservation Commission. Unfortunately, the no trespassing sign, that right there was kind of a little bump in the road. We wish that the wording would have been different. We know that we're not going to be able to keep people off of that road. It's kind of like a gray area, like we own the property, but they have the easement road as well to access their house. So that's kind of something that we're going to see play out in, once the road gets built and once the house is built, but we're not expecting there to be a straight-up gate. Plus, we don't want there to be a gate in case, you know, there's a fire down there, the fire, people have to get down there and all of that. So I know means is there going to be, the concrete pillars that are there right now, again, they weren't, unfortunately, they weren't run through us. We would have asked probably for something a little less permanent-looking. They're not permanent. Before, we had just a very simple wooden, literally, it was just like a little baton that went across the stone walls.
30 seconds.
Okay, sorry. That's going to go back. So the pillars are going to leave and the baton is going to go back. So it's literally just, it's going to go, it's going to look, get reverted back to what it kind of has been looking like.
Any further discussion? Sure. If you want to speak, like, I guess it would be easy if you queued up at either mic. Both of you have spoken to this article. I'm going to go over here first.
Brett Prince from 7 Essex Reach Road. I think the question probably to this group is, if the money's not appropriated, are you going to let the barn fail? Is that the plan? Because it seems like there's other investments, keeping the building would be primary, so it doesn't, still seems to the original point, we don't need to fund this out of ton money for this organization's plans with the site. So that's my comment, and I don't think there's any threat that they're going to let this barn fail if they're making all the other investments in the property around it.
Lisa?
Lisa O'Donnell, again. I'm all in favor of old buildings, and I agree Cogswell Grant is a huge asset for our community, and my only issue with this is that we're spending town money on private property, and if you took the $34,000 here, which is a drop in the bucket, from what I understand from their representative, and you added that to the $150,000 we're going to be talking about for the pavilion, you could do a lot nicer pavilion on our property at the Grove. So I'd just like to see it stay with the town.
Jody Harris. I value Cogswell's Grant. I grew up with the Littles. I grew up with Bert and Nina. I knew the kids. I lived down the street. We played there, we rode horses there. However, our funds are limited here, and as Lisa just said, the pavilion's coming up. Centennial Grove needs attention, and it's a natural asset for our town that we have semi-neglected, just like the tennis courts, and we, I think we need to invest in ourselves. I appreciate Historic New England and their properties, but I also appreciate that they have a huge endowment and we have a very, a very small pot of money for us to be able to do projects for our residents, particularly for the amount of taxes that we all pay. So although I appreciate Historic New England and I love the barn, I also believe that we have many, many other projects that we could use this money, and I think that they will go ahead and fix their barn and continue to install drainage and whatever else happens down there, as they always have, because $102 million over 37 properties, even if it's 200 properties, is a lot of money. We've got a, it's a drop, it's not a drop in the bucket for us. It's a lot of money.
Further discussion? Excuse me? You need to make, is that a motion? I'll need that in writing. Let me check with council, I'll be right back. Sorry about that, I just wanted to get the right procedure. I can take this motion, there is a motion to indefinitely postpone Article 6. It only takes a majority to postpone, so. Is there a second to this motion? It's a motion to indefinitely postpone Article 6, which means you would take no action and put it off to another time. That's, that is the motion, which has been seconded. Discussion on indefinitely, or is it debatable? Is it debatable? I'm sorry. I don't think it's debatable, so. Give a motion to indefinitely postpone, it's been seconded. So all those in favor of indefinitely postponing Article 6, raise your card. If it has to be high enough, don't be shy. Okay? All those opposed to postponing Article 6? It's a major. I am in doubt on a. We're already, so I'm in doubt, so we're going to have to stand up. So all those in favor of indefinitely postponing Article 6, please stand up. I need the tellers. Tellers? I need the tellers. Are the tellers on either side able to count? Yep, you're going to count, you're going to, yep, go ahead and count that side, and they're going to need to count that side. You already counted? Did you get the selectmen as well? Did they agree? Okay. They agree. So you can sit down, and those opposed to indefinitely postponing, please stand up. stand up. So the motion passes to indefinitely postpone Article VI. We will move on to Article VII. Jim, you're still up. Article VII?
I, James Witham, moved at the town vote to transfer from the Community Preservation Fund Housing Reserve a sum of $39,060 and from the unreserved fund balance, the sum of $77,627, for a total appropriation of $116,687 for repair, for replacement of the roof and roofs of the Essex Housing Authority's tobacco terrace property. And any incidental or related to that appropriation to be under the care and custody of the Essex Housing Authority.
Is there a second? Discussion?
This is, as we understand it, is very, very badly needed repair, and it is expensive because it's a lot of roof area. This is an appropriate use of, of funds for, for housing.
Okay. Any further discussion? You can stand there. I'm ready.
Oh, Maya.
Yep.
Mike Dyer, Nine Indian Rock Lane. I, I don't want to speak against elderly housing, but it's been clear from people's comments that we have community service, excuse me, community preservation funds that are precious. We all see them coming out of our tax bills. And my expectation from CPA funds is that they will result in real improvements in our quality of life. There are, there are several kind of program areas in CPA that, that the money is for. This, I'm sure, is a, is a dire need for the public housing in town. But it seems to me it's, it's, it's routine maintenance and repair and probably should come from someplace else, funding-wise. I guess I'd like an explanation as to why it can't be funded from elsewhere and, and why it's coming from, proposed to come from CPA, CPA funds. We have several worthy projects in front of us already tonight, and I can think of several other, several others in town that would be a good use of these funds. So I, I'd like an explanation, please. I'm, I feel opposed to it at the moment.
I, I am going to vote no for this because the housing, the tobacco terrace is owned by the state. And the state has a surplus. And they were even requested by the Mass Municipal Association to, to give more money to this Community Preservation Act. And I don't know what happened to that. But the state has money. It's, it's not our property. We don't have control of who goes in there. Maybe we can advise. I don't think we do. But it's, it's a state property. And, and the CPA in regards to housing is very confusing to me because all affordable housing, the state has a say in it. So I don't even know how Essex can use their CPA money for housing, the 10% that they need to use for housing. So it's kind of a weird, it's, it's weird. I, if someone could please explain that to me, how Essex can legitimately, legitimately use the CPA funds to benefit the town of Essex and Essex residents, that would help me. But right now, I don't, I don't think we should be funding something that the state has money for. And maybe we just need to write letters to the state if we can't, if they don't want to just give us the money, if they don't want to fix their own maintenance. Maybe we should do a letter-writing campaign rather than giving our CPA funds to them.
Ginny?
Virginia Antal, Essex, Mass. I spoke with Irene, who manages the Essex Housing Authority. The issue with this particular housing authority is the fact that no matter how much she tries to have a past budget, they keep cutting the budgets. They have been cutting budgets across the state. I think that this is a good expenditure of our CPA funds because by law, we have to spend 10% of our CPA funds on community housing. These are for people in need. Some of them are veterans. Some of them are not Essex residents, but however, they're in need. And I fully support this article.
Further discussion?
Ruth Perrine. The entire Board of Selectmen at a meeting had a discussion about this particular article when it came before us. And all three of us questioned, why is CPA funding something that's run by the state? This is, you know, the Housing Authority. Why are we doing this through CPA funds? So we reached out to Irene Frontero as well, and we got some answers. And I was going to pick out pieces of this email and just give you the highlights. But honestly, I think that it's important for me to read it. So forgive me for two paragraphs. "The Housing Authority, the Essex Housing Authority receives a limited amount of funding from DHCD, which is earmarked for use on capital improvement projects, including but not limited to building envelope, mechanical systems, infrastructure, and property enhancements. While this amount changes slightly from year to year, the average annual award funding over the next five years is $56,000. This roof replacement project in and of itself would require over two years' worth of funding. In addition to the roofs needing to be replaced, we currently have a project in the design phase for the replacement of the main electrical switchgear for the entire development. This project is currently estimated to cost $115,000 and is being funded partially by the Housing Authority's capital funds as well as additional emergency funds from DHCD. Our current five-year capital improvement plan includes the above-mentioned projects as well as a recent water meter replacement, which was required by the Essex Water Department, the replacement of deteriorating window sills, which contain asbestos, numerous water heater, plumbing, and electrical repairs that were, that were, or in many cases, still are in need of replacement due to the fact that they have exceeded their useful life, and, and much like the failing, the roofs are failing. Over the last few years, the Essex Housing Authority has worked to obtain additional funding over and above this annual award. This funding has included CPC funds for exterior painting and pavement replacement, lean funds for new HVAC equipment, as well as special award of DHCD Sustainability Fund for the replacement of exterior doors. Unfortunately, all of the housing authorities across the state are facing similar situations when it comes to addressing the needs of our aging portfolio. So I think it's important for us to acknowledge that our Housing Authority is struggling, as well as many others, and that the state's only giving them $56,000 a year. I support this article. I think it's important."
Brendan, you want to address a question?
Just a point of information, Mr. Moderator. It's important for the voters to understand that the town has to accumulate the money. 10% each year gets put aside. But the town does not have to spend 10% a year. The town could accumulate that money for 10 or 15 years and decide to spend it on one big housing project. So just so that everyone understands, it does accumulate, and it has to be spent on that. But eventually, it does not have to be spent every single year in that amount.
Gina?
So I have a question. I'm wondering, have we been getting matching funds from the state for RCPA investments or spent expenses?
I'll have to defer to the Finance Committee or Brendan?
We do get some level of match from the state. And when the, when the Community Preservation Act was first passed, and there weren't too many towns in it yet, because it's by local option, the, the match from the state was very generous. At this point, it's very, very low, although we do get some.
Jody?
Yeah. No, I was just going to say, I think it would be helpful for residents to know how much of CPA funds are stipulated to be used for affordable housing, since basically, it's, it's for, for open space protection, historic preservation, and the provision of affordable housing. So it's important that this is a portion of the funding for the Essex Housing Authority. So I just think that would be relevant.
Want to go over here? I'm just going to...
Peter Crocker, Sixth Lufkin Street. Sort of the same issue with spending town money on state property. We, you know, just allocated some money for some tennis courts. That's not the whole bill for the tennis courts. We're asking private citizens to fund the rest of it. I don't understand why we can't use those funds to fund the entire tennis court project instead of asking more money from citizens of Essex.
Brendan? Do you have a question? Do you have any clarification?
Yep. So the chairman of the Finance Committee asked about how the money gets split up. Each year, when money comes in as a surcharge on your tax bill, 10% of that goes to open space reserve, 10% of it goes to historical reserve, and 10% of it goes to the community housing reserve. The other 70% of the money that's collected goes into what's known as the unreserved fund balance. Presently, as of June 30th of 2021, there was just over $93,000 in open space reserve, just over $50,000 in historical reserve, and the number for, that you see tonight, the $39,000 that was in the motion, was, was what's left in the community housing reserve. Remember, these three areas have been tapped for projects over the years. So they're not all consistent amount of money left in them. Further, the unreserved fund balance as of June 30th was just over $535,000. That particular amount of money can be tapped for anything that the Community Preservation Act would allow for.
Jody?
Jody Harris. First question. So the 116, 687 is the full bill of the project? The full bill. Okay. So after hearing the email that Chairman Perrine read, I'm more concerned about voting for this. I do want a roof over the seniors' heads. They're not all of our, our seniors. We have to accept anyone because it's a state property. We don't own the property. However, the laundry list of deficiencies at that property concerns me. We're going to put a roof over, a new roof on all of these buildings that have major deficiencies. I think we probably should have had Bruce Tar stay a bit longer for us to discuss this with Bruce, because $116,000 out of our pockets, and again, it's our pockets where the state is running a surplus. And I think that we need to work a little harder at trying to get the state to pay for their own project and keep up the project, keep up their property, just like you and I keep up our properties. You know, you don't throw a roof over, over, you know, your head and not have heat or not have good electrical systems. So I'm concerned. Somebody's dropping the ball. We're being asked to pick up the ball, and we're being asked to pick up 100% of the ball. That concerns me. If they were asking us for a portion, you know, I think we could say easily, you know, that's a portion. But 100% of the project is tough. It's a state property. It's, it's not our property. And again, we're still only talking about our small little, you know, 600, under $600,000 in, in our coffers. So this is $116,000 of that, and we, and we just allocated $50,000 for tennis courts. So I'm, I'm concerned about why we're paying the full boat on this.
Any further discussion?
Hi. Representative of Essex Housing Authority.
Excuse me. Are you a registered voter here?
No. Representative of Essex Housing Authority. I am the executive director. I am not a resident, but I've been an employee for about eight years here.
Still have to get, still have to get...
Irene Frontero.
Or she's an employee?
Representative.
What's that? I, I still need the voters to allow...
Yeah.
So all those in favor of letting this lady speak in reference to the authority? Anyone opposed? The floor is yours.
Hi. Thank you. I just wanted to come up and say that $116,000 is a lot of money. The roofs have reached their life expectancy. However, this year, we had just finished up an $100,000 exterior door project, a $90,000 electric switch, switchgear that runs the whole development. We have window sills that are being replaced because they have asbestos. We've done the smoke, the heat detectors in the attic, emergency lighting. We have, we do, we own, the Essex Housing Authority owns the Essex Housing Authority. The state does not own it. It's not state-owned. We work under the auspices of the state because the state back in the '60s gave the money to build them. We run that place. It's not affordable. It's low income. We have people paying just over $100,000 a month. It is tough to run everything, get everything done, everybody. I'm sure as we have how it costs, how much it costs to run a household. But I just wanted to say a few things because I heard a couple of comments that I thought needed to be addressed. And we are looking forward to and would like, and appreciate anything that CPA could offer the Housing Authority to get it done. The CPA is to preserve housing. This is the vulnerable citizens of the community of Essex. And we just would like to thank you. And if anybody has any questions, I would be happy to answer them. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Any, any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article VII, raise your card. Okay. Anyone opposed? Raise your card. Motion passes. Article VIII?
I, Ruth Arperine, moved that the town, moved that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $150,000 for materials and/or labor to construct a new pavilion structure at Centennial Grove and anything incidental or related thereto.
Is there a second? Discussion?
So as most of you probably recall, back in the end of April, beginning of May of this year, we had an emergency demo permit issued by our Town Building Inspector. The Folsom Pavilion was deemed to be a liability to the town and an unsafe structure. The Historical Commission reached out to me. They were concerned that the pavilion would be taken down, removed, and then forgotten about. So I did make a promise to the Historical Commission that we would be before you tonight at Fall Town Meeting to talk about funding, to talk about funding to... at Fall Town Meeting to talk about funding, to talk about funding to fund, design, and build, or rebuild, the structure down at Centennial Grove.
Any further discussion?
Ben Butrick, Chair of the Finance Committee. I just wanted to say that we did, when we initially discussed this, the figuring question was about 500,000, and there's been a lot of creative thinking in terms of figuring out how we can really keep the cost down. I would encourage residents to consider $150,000, recognizing that there's more work to be done in terms of the final exhibit. The ideas were very encouraging, so it's a reasonable use.
Further discussion?
Mark Renzi, absolutely agree. I think this is a great example of community effort to bring the cost down and come together as a community to build this structure. It's a wonderful spot, and for those who participated in ALS for ALS, it was really beautiful to see it. And I think, based on some information that Ruth has gone through and presented to myself and others of the Finance Committee, this is a great solution to save money for the town, but still come up with a great structure and come together as a community. Thank you.
Further discussion?
Jody Harris, you're gonna be sick of me tonight. Are you already? I'm the new Chair of the Economic Development Committee. I am interested in knowing what our full plan is for Centennial Grove. I understand the need or the desire to replace the Folsom Pavilion. It tugs at all of our hearts a little bit, but I'm questioning what's the plan for the entire property? It has some potential for economic development, renting it out, just like ALS for ALS. We've got the house up there. We have Camp Dory that goes there. But I guess what I want to really know is, are we going to develop a full plan before we sink 150, and let's call it $200,000, because that's probably more where it'll end up? So I'm wondering if we're ready to allocate $150,000, if we want to take a few steps back and think about where we, where we might land if we actually fully renovate the property, what that's going to look like, what would the use be? Are we going to rent it out for events? Are we going to have somebody in town who will have that as their job responsibility so that we can actually make the property work for us? I've heard rumors too about the house up at the Grove. I have no desire to turn that house over to anybody else other than keeping it in town. But we also have people who, you know, complain a bit about not being able to use the property when the camp is in session. We have nice walking trails up there. So I guess I'm not 100% convinced that $150,000 is a great investment until you have the full plan. It's a little bit of a piecemeal of replacing a structure that I'm really not sure what it's going to be used for. So I think, I think I'd rather step back and, and look at a full plan as opposed to erecting a pavilion and then saying, okay, what's next?
Further discussion? All those in favor of Article 8, raise your card. Opposed? Motion passes. Article 9.
I, Ruth R. Perrin, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $52,000 for the purpose of increasing the Police Department operating budget for fiscal year 2022 to account for increases in police wages for training or shift backfill with respect to training mandated during fiscal year 2022 by the Massachusetts Police Reform Law and other necessary training, and for additional fiscal year 2022 police staffing costs and any cost necessary to operate the department without substantial use of part-time labor. Said transfer shall be distributed into the fiscal year 2022 Police Department budget as follows. Overtime incidental, $15,330. Part-time police salaries, $21,670. Firearms training, $3,000. In-service training expense, $12,000.
Is there a second? Discussion?
I don't really have much discussion. If there's any questions, I'm sure Chief Francis would be happy to answer them.
Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 9, raise your card. All those opposed? Motion passes. Article 10.
I, Guy D. Bradford, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $8,000 to provide training for police body and vehicle camera usage and anything incidental or related thereto.
Is there a second?
Well, there's not quite finished.
Okay, go ahead.
With said appropriation being in addition to any grant or gift funds that may be received to actually purchase the cameras and related equipment.
Is there a second?
This is obviously contingent upon our successful receiving a grant for the purchase of the equipment.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 10, raise your card. All those opposed? Motion passes. Article 11.
Paul Rulo, Low Hill Road, Essex DPW Board Benmer. I, Paul Rulo, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash, the sum of $94,600, to purchase and equip a sidewalk snow removal tractor for use by the Department of Public Works.
Is there a second? Discussion?
Currently, we remove snow with one single piece of equipment. That piece of equipment is 12 years old. Feel that the town would be served if we purchased a new piece of equipment for approximately $95,000 to rubber tie a machine. It has a four-foot wide snow removal equipment on it. It also accepts other implements that can be used the other seasons. So the DPW Board requests your approval for $94,600 for a snow removal implement.
Any further discussion?
Elizabeth Eaton, 17 Spring Street. Could you just quickly tell us what else this can do, and how many years do you anticipate this piece working? Said the last one was what, 12 years?
Yes, the existing equipment is approximately, is 12 years old. I'm not sure what the expected life of it, of the new piece of equipment is, but certainly 12 to 20 years. The one that we have that is 12 years old, we do intend to continue to use it when staff is available to remove snow, and it is available as a backup or as a secondary piece of equipment.
Further discussion?
Oh, well, in addition to the snow removal auger that we're going to purchase, we're also gonna, gonna purchase an excavator bucket. That's a wide bucket. But in addition, you can get a flail mower to do the side of the road. You could get a front deck mower to do fields. You could do the, you could do the grove with it. You could do the Centennial Park with it.
You can't, it can't have a discussion.
But, but, but there are many implements that's all hydraulically driven. You can do an auger. You can get lawn mowers. You can get an excavator bucket, a loader bucket, typical landscaping-type equipment and construction equipment.
Further discussion? Mark?
Mark Renzi, 86 Southern. The Finance Committee had a long discussion about this equipment, did their own research. I think what, sufficient to say that when we're trying to look, equate this to a car wash, and I know it might not be the best analogy, but let's say there's the silver, the gold, and the platinum. Our understanding is that this is the gold level of machines. It's quite expensive, but it's well-made. It's supported by some research that's been done, not only by the Finance Committee, but also presented by the DPW. And we understand that the lesser machine, that's probably 60,000, and Paul can correct me if I'm wrong, has inferior metal and doesn't have a long track record, and this machine does have a long track record. And so I think it's a lot of money, but it was explained very well to us in our, in the Finance Committee meeting, and I think the Finance Committee meeting were supportive. So Paul, maybe you can explain if I said anything incorrectly.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article 11, raise your card. All those opposed? Motion passes. Article 12.
I, Peter D. Fippen, move that the town vote to transfer from the Town Technology Fund the sum of $3,100 to implement Essex's share of capital purchase and/or software licensing and/or operational support that will facilitate cybersecurity services to be offered by the Town of Danvers with respect to its Regional Information Technology Memorandum of Understanding with Essex and other area communities and anything incidental or related thereto.
Is there a second? Discussion?
This is simply to upgrade the cybersecurity systems for the town computer systems.
Further discussion? All those in favor of Article 12, raise your card. Opposed? Motion passes. Article 13.
I, Benjamin Butrick, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the following sums to be added to the allowable funds. $20,000 to the Building Capital Improvements Fund, $20,000 to the Recreational Capital Improvements Fund, $200,000 to the purchase of vehicles and major equipment that qualifies as Capital Purchases Fund, $20,000 to the Town Hall Library Repair and Maintenance Fund, $20,000 to the Conomo Point Repair, Maintenance, and Improvement Fund, $3,000 to the Municipal Street Lighting Repair and Maintenance Fund, $20,000 to the Public Safety Building Repair and Maintenance Fund, $20,000 to the Dredging Match Fund, and $20,000 to the Town Celebrations Fund.
Is there a second? Discussion?
So if you do your math, you'll see that this adds up to $343,000. This is simply taking money from free cash and replenishing. The town has about 18 different funds that are used for different purposes, typically capital purchases in the future. The big-ticket item here is the vehicles and major equipment. In the next few years, the town is going to have to be looking at getting new fire apparatus. That's, we have, based on how we finished the fiscal year, we have adequate free cash to be funding these. Now is the time it makes sense to do that. So that's what this is.
Do you have the motion? Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 13, raise your card. All those opposed? Motion passes. Article 14.
I, Peter Fippen, move that the town vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, to amend Section 2-26 of the Town's general bylaws to establish a new revolving fund for the Council on Aging for the purposes of managing fees and payments associated with Council on Aging organized classes and trips, as shown in Article 14 of the Fall Town Meeting warrant, and to establish a spending limit of $30,000 for fiscal year 2022 with such spending limit to be applicable for each fiscal year until such time as Town Meeting votes prior to July 1st for the ensuing fiscal year to increase the same.
Is there a second? Discussion?
So this, this is to create a fund for the Council on Aging so that when they do events and such, that they can pay vendors out. They don't have to be so exacting as to how much money they take in specifically before they schedule the event. So it's really just sort of a pass-through. There's no real money coming from the town. It's, it's participants in the events paying, and this allows them to pay out.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article 14, raise your card. Any opposed? Motion passes. Article 15.
I, Guy D. Bradford, move that the town vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 5B, to create a stabilization fund for the offsetting of annual Essex operating budget apportionments from the Manchester, Essex Regional School District in any year when the year-over-year percentage increase in the town's specific operating apportionment exceeds the overall year-over-year percentage increase in the apportionment-funded portion of the district's operating budget, as set forth in the agreement between the towns of Essex and Manchester by the Sea, Massachusetts, with respect to the formation of a regional school district, as most recently amended, and to transfer from free cash the sum of $50,000 to add to said stabilization fund.
Is there a second? Discussion?
That's a lot of gobbledygook. So I'm gonna make a shot at trying to explain this as best I can, if I actually understand. Each year, according to the terms of the original Regional School District Agreement between the two towns, after the district has developed an overall operating budget for the coming year, there must be a reapportionment of the share of expenses apportioned to the two towns. And that reapportionment is made based on relative changes in comparison of three demographic characteristics. And those three characteristics are school enrollment, overall population, and assessed property values. For example, if the percentage of Essex students enrolled were to increase as compared to Manchester students, then all other things being equal, Essex's apportioned share of the overall budget would increase and be greater than the overall school budget increase for that year. On the other side, naturally, if our percentage of overall enrollment were to go down, our apportioned share of expenses would decrease, and it would be less than the overall school budget increase for that year. While changes to these apportionment factors have caused variances in the rates of assessment for the two towns from year to year, over the long term, they have tended to cancel each other out. The purpose of this stabilization fund is to lessen or eliminate the negative effect on the town's operating budget in any year when our apportioned increase in the school budget exceeds the overall percentage increase of the district as a whole, as the example above I talked about. It would be utilized only in that specific case and would not be used to lower the town's percentage increase below the percentage increase of the district as a whole. Any future contribution to this fund would need to be approved at a future town meeting.
Further discussion? Ben?
Yeah, I thought it might be helpful to residents just to hear an example of what Guy is speaking to. So in this most recent fiscal year and the total assessment to both Essex and Manchester by the Sea combined was 3.5%. For Essex, it was 3.96%. So what this fund is doing is it's actually covering that almost half percent differential, which
which, I mean, the school budget is almost half of our non-water and sewer expenditures, so it's significant. So a half percentage point swing can impact the town's operating budget. So this is essentially a mechanism. It's sort of a circuit breaker mechanism. You know, it can go the other way, as Guy said, because in 2018, it was 3.2% was the total assessment to both towns. Essex paid 2.28. So the idea is when we're below the total assessment number, we replenish the fund. When we're up, we draw from it. So this is actually just the initial funding of it.
Further discussion?
This, Mark Renzi, this is the Finance Committee's way of trying to smooth things out. We're not spending extra money, other than what's dictated by the math that Guy had presented. So we think this is a better way to smooth things out in terms of the budget and to make sure we're staying closer to 3.5%. So that's all.
Further discussion? This requires a 2/3 vote to set up a stabilization fund, so all those in favor of Article 15, raise your card, please. All those opposed? I declare it passed by 2/3. Article 16.
Paul Rulo, Member of the DPW Board. Aye. Paul Rulo moved that Article 16 be indefinitely postponed.
Is there a second?
This was a small sewer item that we had decided not to pursue it this time, so we postponed it.
All those in favor of postponing Article 16, raise your card. Any opposed? It's postponed. Article 17.
I, Paul Rulo, move that the town vote to transfer from Water Enterprise free cash the sum of $60,000 to replenish the water maintenance line item in the Water Enterprise Fund Budget for fiscal year 2022.
Is there a second? Yes? Discussion?
Yeah, our budget for miscellaneous repairs at the water system is about $50,000. Several mechanical and piping and electrical issues that consume that money. So we're asking to take money out of the water free cash budget to get us through this fiscal year. We're asking to transfer $60,000 for future maintenance for the water system to get us through June 30th.
Further discussion? All those in favor of Article 17, raise your card. Opposed? Motion passes. Article 18.
I, Paul Rulo, move that the town vote to transfer from Sewer Enterprise free cash the sum of $50,000 to design, engineer, and construct repairs, upgrades, improvements, and/or replacements to any aspect of the municipal sewer system, including but not limited to replacement of grinder pumps, related equipment, and anything incidental or related thereto.
Is there a second?
Yeah, this money will be used for our grinder pump replacement program that we've been carrying on for the last two years. We started in, I believe, year 20. We have 200 grinder pumps in town that we're going through at a consistent pace to replace and upgrade. This $50,000 will get us through this fiscal year.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your card. Opposed? Motion passes. Article 19.
I, Peter Fippen, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $10,000 to hire duly licensed private parties to trap green crabs within Essex and dispose of said green crabs and anything incidental and related thereto. Said appropriation being in addition to any grant or gift funds that may be received in connection with this activity.
Is there a second? Discussion?
This fund matches what the state has been giving us over the last few years for green crab trapping. Green crabs are highly invasive and wreak havoc, among other things, wreak havoc on the clam flats. And so we're matching, we want to match the money that the state's been giving, and it's appropriate that this year, they're fairly prolific in this particular year, so it's a good thing for us to be doing.
Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 19, raise your card. All opposed? Motion passes. Article 20.
I, Rob Fitzgibbon, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $15,000 to replenish Finance Committee's Reserve Fund for fiscal year 2022.
Is there a second?
This is a fiscal housekeeping article to top off a reserve fund that we have in case there are unforeseen expenses.
All those in favor of Article 20, raise your card. Any opposed? Motion passes. Article 21.
I, Ben Butrick, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $500,000 to fund the town's other post-employment benefits, or OPEB, trust fund.
Is there a second? Discussion?
OPEB is essentially healthcare liability for town employees in the future. It is a, it's a future liability that the town has to pay for. And basically, what we do is we put money away each year to be able to cover that future Based on the actuarial report, the liability is 4.35 million. That's the future liability. We're at 1.6 now. This would put 500,000 in, bring us up to 2.1, gets us about 50% funded, which is actually extraordinary, because if you look, if you look at the national average across the country in terms of funded status for OPEBs, they are atrociously underfunded. I mean, state OPEB funds average 10% funded status. So this puts the town in good shape in terms of covering this future need. This amount is a bit more than what we've done in the past because our free cash this year allows for it. So it's just the prudent.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article 21, raise your card. Any opposed? Motion passes. Article 22 happens to be our last one. No, it isn't. Sorry. Got one more.
I, Michael Flynn, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $11,000 to the Buildings Repair and Maintenance Line Item in fiscal year 2022 Council on Aging Operating Budget, and to transfer from free cash the sum of $7,100 to the Town Planner Part-Time Line Item in fiscal year 2022 Selectman's Operating Budget.
Is there a second? Discussion?
This is, for the most part, our housekeeping issue, trying to move some funds that are in existence to two necessary uses within different pieces of the budget.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article 22, raise your card. Any opposed? Motion passes. Before we get to the last one, remember what I said about exiting. If you could do the back rows first, and then we'll move our way forward. That would be excellent.
I just want to make a quick announcement. For those of you that are not on social media or who have not seen the signboards, this Saturday evening, November 20th, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., will be our 31st Annual Spaghetti Dinner at our new Public Safety Building in 11 John Weisav. It is from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., the most amazing meatballs in the world. There is, there is a to-go option. So for those of you that are immunocompromised, know somebody immunocompromised, or just are not comfortable being in public, there will be a phone number. I don't know how to get it to everybody, not on social media, but it's 978-778-4554. I can repeat that at the end. You can text me, call me, or email me, and I can give you that number. But for those of you that didn't know, we would love to see everybody there.
Thank you, Ruth. Sorry, Paul, didn't mean to delay.
I, Paul Rulo, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $17,055 for unpaid bills for fiscal year 2021.
Is there a second?
There's an admin item at the transfer station. Our vendor at that facility, Covanta, had done some work at the end of fiscal year 21, and we didn't receive the bill until the beginning of fiscal year 22. So we're just transferring money from one year to another to pay for it.
Any further discussion? This requires a 9/10 vote, so appreciate it. We just get through this one. All those in favor of Article 23, raise your card. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Enjoy your evening. We're out.